Okay, Peter, so to answer your question, we, it looks like we have myself, Wyatt Nelson, Andy Worgen, Emily Gerret, Emily Gerret Russo from EDR, Jamie Seton, Kathy Cots, Kerry Mannion, Nathan Brown, Nick Quilty-Covell, you, Bob Abbott is here, Terry Horst is on the line, and then there's several telephone numbers who, I'm not sure who they are, but it seems like the, the meeting will announce them as they, as they join us. So it sounds like Joe Mueller has just hopped on, and I'm not, I'm not sure what some of these other numbers are.
All right, well, we gotta call him then, so with Joe, Nathan, Nathan said he had some computer problems.
No, I'm here.
Oh, you're, okay, thanks, Nathan.
Yep, yeah, I clicked on the link and it crashed my computer.
Well, there was a few problems this morning, I apologize. We had-
Right, and Peter, just, just interrupt, I just want to disclose that this meeting is being recorded and will be available on the town website after we all wrap here.
Thank you, and welcome to one of our town board members, Kerry. Thanks for joining.
Morning, everybody. Can you guys hear me?
Hi, Kerry.
Yeah, loud and clear.
Nice job, good to be here.
Yeah, oh, thank you. The, um, we had a work session with Lindsen Corners with Jet Black and Neil Gold and Amanda Gold, and we had a work session on the Alpha site. So, uh, any work sessions planned for two weeks, Nick?
Hi, Peter, there are no work sessions planned for the upcoming work session.
Okay, thank you, Nick. I'd like to have a, a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion, Peter.
Okay, Kathy, Kathy, and who's second, Nathan?
Yep.
Thank you, Nathan. All in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
Bye.
Any opposed? Kerry's unanimously, thank you very much. Um, I know Peter Mazzurian's on, and I know-
Somebody on the phone wants to help you out, figure out what you're doing, because you're not coming through.
Uh, Pemco, Brook Lawn Entry Renovations, recommendation to the, to ZBA regarding the parking lot, the entrance ways and parking lot improvements. Stephanie, do you wanna take a quick lead on this? You're muted, Stephanie.
You're muted, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to get the, um, the meeting under control, it keeps like, Bob Abbott keeps on rejoining the meeting here, and I'm, I'm muting him, I don't think it's aware of that, so I'm hoping he can hear. Let me just pull up the plans to get started, um-
I can keep an eye on that for you, Stephanie, if, if the sound becomes an issue, I'll mute him as well.
Thanks, Emily. Okay, thanks.
Yep. Okay, so, um, here's, here's the latest plan we have in file for the Brook Lawn project, and we've reviewed this as just a, like, sort of building entry improvements area, and there's also some improvements to the sidewalk infrastructure connecting the existing and proposed ADA stalls in the front. Um, there was one change that was requested the last meeting, which was a pass-through with the concrete sidewalk through the driveway areas, and we understand that this project requires, um, like, a net shortage of nine parking spaces, which is what we are hoping to, um, recommend to the ZBA on today.
Okay, and, uh, but everything else architecturally, we, we've resolved all those other issues?
That is correct.
Okay, uh, yeah, it's a nice improvement. Um, I'd like to, uh, just a second here, I've got a, I've got my little notes here, usually, she's at my side, literally now, or virtually now, so, thank you. Uh, this is, um, any questions from the board members?
The only question is, is there anyone here for the applicant that wanted to say anything about this recommendation?
Um, Terry Horst and Rick Rutherford are here. Um, we don't have any additional information to say about the application. We did revise the drawings, um, to show the concrete pass-through, uh, the driveways, um, and we'll get the board updated drawings for that for the next meeting that we're-
Thank you. That's a nice, it's a nice project. I'm gonna, I'll make the motion and, uh, hearing, uh, and if then, we can move forward with this. A motion is recommended to the zoning board of appeals that a variance for the reduction of the required number of parking spaces on the site by nine spaces. This recommendation also takes into account the existing parking count and the, and the reserve. As a baseline, it should be noted that there are currently 249 spaces on the site. After the variance, the spaces will be 240. The 240 spaces will be considered the proper baseline for all future decisions on parking. Additionally, there will be reserved parking on the site for 86 spaces. While the addition of this amenity, which has enhanced the building and site greatly, has triggered a requirement for additional parking, the applicant has presented evidence that the number of spaces on the site is not currently used for full capacity and is very unlikely to be so utilized. Accordingly, it is not practical to increase impervious surface to add park, parking where there's not needed. Uh, may I, that's the motion, may I have someone second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, Joe or Nathan? Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, carried unanimously. All right, thank you. Uh, the Commerce Boulevard, as long as we got Pemco on, you wanna move to that agenda item? This is a, um, proposed parking addition associated site improvements in industrial. This is the one with Brink's.
Okay, um, so from the last submission to this round, um, what's been indicated is, uh, the sidewalk, again, infrastructure from the parking lot to the building, the path has been outlined. The applicants have issued a statement just explaining why the crosswalk jogs across the lot in this fashion, and that is to accommodate the slide gate. Um, the man gate has to go in this area so that the gate can pull back into this lawn, and, um, they are also proposing to do, um, a different type of fence installation along Commerce Boulevard here, the most visible part of the project. So it's a, it will be a, a heavy wrought iron fence material in lieu of the regular chain link fence topped with barbed wire. So if they wanna add anything else?
Well, that, that explanation, we did discuss this last Tuesday, uh, that explanation was exactly what we surmised, so I appreciate. Kerry, can you see this? Are you, are you on the phone or are you just, are you on the computer?
I'm on both, but yeah, I can see it fine, this is great. You really did sign in today.
It's, uh, impressive. Uh, Stephanie is, and Emily, they've done a great job. All right, um, any questions on, on this? I think we've been through this a number of times.
I guess my question is, why would they put, why wouldn't they just go right straight across and then along the edge of the building rather than traversing across the middle of the parking lot? Is that painted? Isn't that heavy duty asphalt?
I think there's still an exit door for vehicles at this point, so they probably wanted to get pedestrians away from that door.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, uh, this is Terry Horst, uh, Terry Horst Landscapes Architecture. There, there are two, um, overhead doors in front of that man door, so that's why we need a diagonal. And it's a natural way that they walk to the door anyway, going through the gate.
Okay, any other questions from the board members? All right, hearing none, I'm gonna make the motion to approve the plan as presented with the finding that the applicant has presented with the following findings. This board has reviewed the Onondaga County Planning Board Resolution of April 8th, 2020, and accepts the following with respect to the modifications proposed. A SWIP must be submitted and be acceptable to the town as final condition of this approval. The applicant must comply with any requirement of New York State, um, STA with regard to the drainage onto, uh, stormwater drainage, onto the thruway and site lighting. The board is satisfied with the traffic data submitted. This board has revised the parking table dated May 13th, 2020, submitted by the applicant, and it has been reviewed by the board and found that the applicant has provided on its plan the sufficient number of parking spaces for this facility per the code. This approval is made with the following conditions. The approval is for plan and other submitted documents, site plan documents that have been signed by the planning board chairperson and the applicant, and as requires that all of the work shown, uh, be completed by the applicant in order for the certificate of occupancy or compliance be issued. Any proposed changes, additions, deletions of the scope of the work or materials for the site plan documents are not approved and are subject to further site plan review pursuant to the Town of DeWitt Code, Section 192-122. That's my motion. I have a second, please.
I'll second, Peter.
Kathy, thank you very much. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, carried unanimously. Um, thank you, Peter, I think that takes care of the, those two agenda items. Um, let's move on to- Yes. Okay, bricks more. This is, uh-
Peter Mazzurian.
Hi, Peter.
Is now exiting.
Okay, subdivision, uh, proposed division of one lot into two lots in a business district. Jamie, do you wanna comment on this?
So, uh, this, we had actually looked at this some time ago, uh, in, in fact, the SACPA Resolution is back from October. Uh, the applicant had been working with corporate on the REA agreement, the reciprocal easement access, which was extremely important to this board, um, with respect to making sure that all of the accesses, all of the parking, um, and all of the traversing across the various parcels were completely, um, interactive and shared, and, uh, that, the document ultimately that was submitted and then revised and resubmitted, uh, I, it has been approved by me. I, I talked to F.L. Gorman, um, about it, and, uh, and this last submission is fine, so this is ready for approval, and they did the, the SEACOR, the EAF, everything.
Great, I have a motion. Um, any questions from the board members? Okay, the motion to approve the subdivision plan as made by Oss Field and Waldorf Land Surveyors LLP, last dated March 16th, 2020, as presented by the following findings. The board has reviewed the EAF submitted by the applicant and finds no significant environmental issues presented and issues, or, and issues a negative SEACOR declaration for this project. This board has reviewed the Onondaga County Planning Board Resolution of October 30th, uh, that would be 2019, is that? I don't think we're, is that a 2019?
Yeah.
It is, yes.
Thanks, Nathan. Uh, where this county found no significant adverse inter-community or county-wide implications by reason of the proposal, and with the following conditions. This applicant shall execute the REA agreement submitted and reviewed by council and on file with the town as of May 27th, 2020, and the same shall be recorded in the Onondaga County Clerk's Office simultaneously with the filing of the subdivision map with proof of recording to be provided by the applicant. The subdivision map shall be filed by the Onondaga County Clerk's Office with proof of the same to be provided to the town upon filing. Uh, that's it. Uh, somebody second the motion, please?
I'll second.
Okay, Joe, I got Joe on, uh, all in favor? Can you just list your names if, in favor so we can make sure we got everybody?
Kathy in favor.
Kathy?
Yep.
Nathan in favor.
Joe in favor, Peter, approve. All right, all in favor, Kerry's unanimously, thank you very much.
Excuse me, Peter, I, on the last motion, the Pemco, who seconded that motion, please?
It was either Joe or Nathan.
Well, we'll put Nathan, since Joe did the last one.
Yep, all right. We're equal, Kerry, we're an equal opportunity planning board here. We, we keep score.
We, we spread the love around.
Yes, we do. All right.
This, this is F.L. Gorman, thank you very much, planning board members.
Thank you, thank you to the applicant.
Thank you, F.L.
Thanks for participating. Uh, okay, let's move on. Tracy Holdings, we've got three agenda items. Um, Andy's been working with this, but who, who wants to speak up on, on?
Is now exiting.
Site plan review proposal, storage equipment display, existing sites, and, and industrial district. Um, so, uh, there's three items here. Stephanie or Andy, who, who wants to kind of bring us up to date? Oh, there, there you go, Stephanie. Like magic here.
Hello, this is Mark, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I thought we were talking about the, uh, storage building first, that's the other site. That's 6803.
All right, let's do the, what do you prefer? You want, we can go with whatever you, you prefer, your, or last-
We'll just start the agenda, so follow the agenda if we can. Wyatt, are you there?
Stephanie, can you, uh, pull up the storage?
Yep, just give me a moment to navigate around here.
See if Wyatt is there, is Wyatt there?
Yes, Wyatt is here, but I believe he's muted. I cannot unmute him.
Hmm, that could be a good thing.
Is that, yeah?
I heard that.
I'm glad you said that, I'd be mind to say.
Texting, tell him that he's muted.
You might wanna text him.
No, he's there.
Yeah, good morning.
Good morning, Wyatt.
So I've got these all up together in the, um, additions folder, because it all came in as one. I had the other site queued up, because I know that the most, um, significant outstanding item that the board is interested in discussing would be the architecture for the main addition site, so, um, I know the last materials came through email.
Well, just for the, I thought we were gonna talk about the, the storage, the subdivision.
I was not, I was not prepared to discuss the, the subdivision this morning, um-
Okay, excuse me, let me, uh, have, um, Jamie.
Yep.
Yeah, so, the, the subdivision, um, is fine, I, I guess I'll, I'll say that, so, um, we should be prepared to, um, just prepare a resolution next week, at the next meeting, maybe we'll get everything done, so, um, we've been, we had been through some questions as to whether, you know, the uses on the various sites and whether they were allowed, and, you know, whether there could be specific uses on sites. I don't know if you all recall that discussion, but ultimately, um, it was determined that the way they wish to subdivide this is fine, um, so it's going to be a consolidation of, to the lots, and one of the lots is staying by itself.
Okay, uh, we had discussed that.
Sorry for the vagueness about a bunch of the lots, but you can see it on the plan. So, uh, so, Mark and Wyatt, we'll, we should be prepared to, uh, certainly make that resolution the next meeting.
Okay, this, the proposed storage and equipment display at existing site on industrial district.
If you'll just give me a moment to, um, bring up the plans for the storage building.
Thank you.
Okay, so I've got the, um, the proposed architectural rendering displayed on the, on the screen, and what we had asked for was, um, for the, for the signage to be redressed, because it, there's really no co-compliant permanent storage that's present on this site, um, and it's, it's certainly out of character with the rest of the Tracy Road Equipment Business. So, um, Mark, I, I'm not sure where you'd like to start, whether it's on the building elevations or with the site, but I'd be, I'd be happy to-
Yeah, so, so let's, let's go back and, and kind of, uh, uh, go over what I believe the board asked of us the last time. Uh, the board asked, uh, for us to address, uh, the signage, which was a, a temporary sign that was put, like a banner sign, so, uh, the elevation that you see shows a, a more permanent illuminated, uh, type of, uh, avid display for the branding, the three branding signs that were allowed. Uh, we also talked about reducing or, you know, pavement and getting those landscape buffer strips, uh, which we provided in the site plan. Uh, we also talked about, uh, getting the pavement out of that cul-de-sac area and making that into green area. Now, we showed it on the plans, and then also we showed, uh, we, we were asked to designate where display parking or display, uh, area would be for, uh, their equipment. So, with that said, that, that plan reflects everything that we discussed, uh, uh, at least, at least in my opinion, uh, at that meeting, so, the, the, what you're, the plan that you're looking at right now is a demolition plan, I don't know if you, you know, and it shows the removal of, of asphalt hatched in the, uh, in the, in the gray area. Now, we took out some of that pavement in the, uh, in the cul-de-sac. Now, what was never discussed is, you know, I think the town uses that for turnaround for their plows, so when we remove that, that pavement in there, how does it affect the town's ability to turn their vehicle in there? Uh, and we'll do whatever you, you know, the board wants, but-
Yeah, that's a good point. Uh, Andy, would you look into that, or Nick?
Yes.
I mean, if that's, if that's a right of way, can they make improvements in that cul-de-sac like that? Modify it?
Uh, that's another question.
We were asked to do that, you know, to get the cement out of there, and that's what we, that's where we went. We also reduced the size of that opening, uh, in that cul-de-sac, you know, that you can see that's, that's kind of throttled down a little bit.
Yeah, I see that.
To provide that green area, so, uh, but, you know, it's, it's something that you may wanna consider, you know, I mean, it, you know, for the town's benefit.
We'll get back to you on that, it's a good point. Uh, so, I think you covered everything, I just don't know about the sign, I, uh, you, you accomplished one by removing the, uh, the banner sign, and then, uh, we, we just need to see what meets code on the, the storage building sign.
Yeah, because, you know, we, we looked at it, we looked at it by code as a separate lot, uh, and, and the, and, and that would, in our opinion, it would qualify for, uh, you know, signage that, that could be utilized for that lot, and then we have also a ground-mounted monument sign.
Yep.
Be the same, the same as, as we're proposing, uh, at 6803.
I think the, the question would just be, you know, colors and size at this point, right?
Of what?
Of the sign.
The monument sign?
No, the building mounted sign.
Well, both, but, but-
Monument sign, I mean, you know, we would like to go with the, you know, the, uh, uh, the company logo, the color, so this way, you know, it's, it's a, you know, it's a branding, so if you change their colors, you know, they, they, they may not like that.
Well, in some cases, I, I'm gonna defer to, uh, Jamie, um, we are allowed some branding, but I don't know what size those signs can be.
Yeah, we'll review, we'll review, make sure that they're code compliant, and just take a look at the color choices.
I mean, the sizes of, the sizes of the signs are, you know, 20 square feet per sign, or less.
Okay, well, we'll review that and, uh, and, and respond. Um, and the monument sign is, is another issue that's, that's code specified, uh, and then we'll find out about the cul-de-sac, uh, the turning radius for the plows. Uh, any other questions?
I did have a question about the north building facade. Um, currently, there's like a, a glass man door here that's all papered up, and we're hoping to see that, um, addressed permanently, if that's not a desired accessway into the building. Was that, um, considered?
Well, maybe Wyatt could address that, but, you know, we need to keep the, the public from looking in there because, uh, you know, if they see what's inside, they may wanna vandalize the, the, the building.
Or there may be another-
So maybe we could do some type of material Wyatt could come up with.
Just do a, like a 3M film or something, something that obscures vision and looks a little bit more permanent.
Yeah, I mean, the board told us we had to get that paper off there at the last meeting, and I, I talked to the owner about it, but he, you know, it's probably, he's been, he's actually, because of the virus, he couldn't get home, but, uh, so that probably slipped their mind, but, uh, we'll get that off of there.
All right, thank you. All right, so that's, anything else on that?
Yeah, there are a few, um, wall-mounted, um, lighting packs that are showing up on the, on the building. If you go to like the street view or something, you can see them. Um, has the lighting been incorporated into this project as well?
We, we, I couldn't get the, the lighting, uh, for the meeting. I do have a, a new lighting upgraded, uh, plan. Basically, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna, we're gonna illuminate around the building only for security, uh, and those lights will be the same lights that are, are existing, or similar, I should say, some, be the same style, obviously be less wattage of what is currently at the main building, main facility at 68803.
Are they code compliant? That's, I guess that's really the ultimate.
Um, the, the new lights will be, you know, dark style compliant, et cetera.
Okay.
So, uh, I, I have that plan, I could submit that, you know, at the, you know, I could, whenever, I could, I could submit it now, uh, if, you know, I just, I just-
Bring it in, you don't have to wait, just keep, keep it going to Stephanie and Nick.
Yeah.
Okay.
That sounds, that sounds good, Mark, thank you.
Yeah.
That it? And, and, uh, George?
Those were the major items that we had, um, had broached with the last discussion, so I'm, I'm looking forward to reviewing all these materials as we proceed with the technical review, just so we can inch this one closer towards approval.
Okay, great. Uh, I don't wanna hate, I wanna take a major step forward here. Uh, the, um, site plan review, this is the one with the, uh, building addition, ah, and I think, I, I liked what we saw, I, I'll defer to the architects. Um, Nathan, did you wanna make a comment on this?
That's, that's the same rendering as, that's the original rendering.
So what Wyatt did is he provided where he was at the first time and where he thought the board wanted him to go to.
So you keep going down.
Yeah, keep going down, Steph.
That's it.
Yep. So we were looking to limit materials and, uh, to, to three basics, uh, Nathan, do you wanna, you, Nathan, anybody?
Yeah, I think, as I appreciate the efforts that are, that are made, um, I still feel as though that's a big, huge mass with no horizontal banding. I mean, there's, there's nothing that ties the whole, the, the buildings together. If you go back up one, Stephanie?
Yep, just a slow display here.
So, there are modifications that have been made to the existing building, it appears now, correct?
Yes, uh, the only, the comment that I heard in the sketch meeting was that it needed to relate more to the existing building on the south face. So, in a response, um, this addition, keep in mind, is less than 3% in the building area, and it's less than 8% in the perimeter of the building, so this-
But it's also like 95% of the massage.
This is nothing but an accent point on the building, and so, I do not wanna put horizontal datum's across there. I want this thing to be a strong corner, and if I had to carry the drive it across, it would just wash out. And if you think about how people drive by here and experience this building, there's a lot going on, and you rarely see the south elevation. The east elevation's much more important. And, but they're both important to me. So in response to the board's request to make it more relatable to the southern elevation, I ripped the drive it off and I reduced the number of materials to only metal panels and concrete brick, which was the best material on the building to begin with. So it's certainly an upgrade of materials. The addition proper adds a huge benefit to the building from an aesthetic standpoint. Not every design has to be a layered cake.
I got the message. Anybody else want to make a comment? Nathan, do you want to follow up with it?
I think I've made all my comments.
Okay.
To add to that, we have gone further by carrying the masonry all across the east elevation, all the way over to the service part to upgrade that whole elevation as well.
Okay. All right.
So we're not going to make a decision today. We have a couple of members not here. Let's pass these comments, including what Wyatt has said about this to the other board members and see if we can come to a consensus on it. Peter, does that make sense?
Yeah, no, that was my, I was going to articulate the same thing. I think it's improved. I understand both sides of the argument. We can discuss it and Wyatt, you made your point very clear. And Nathan, as you have as well. I would comment that this is a significant improvement over what we started with. And I'm appreciative of the applicant's effort and Wyatt's effort towards those continuous improvement in the design. Stephanie, anything else?
Yep, so we're going to be reviewing the full submission, going through each and every one of the detailed comments that we always do. And we'll be getting them comments as soon as possible.
When will that be? Just so, I just, I know we had a holiday and things are all messed up and you're going to have, you'll be out for a little bit. So either you or Emily, when will those comments go out to the applicant?
The typical timeline would be after the planning board has the next meeting. So, sorry. Just let me pull my calendar here. So, yeah, again, this last submission was not reviewed as, I was under the impression this material was submitted for a potential work session or just a progress set update. So if we review it per standard timeline, beginning on Monday, which would be the next submission date, which is June 1st. Typically, we review all our internal comments with the planning board. That would be on June 9th during our internal meeting and work session. Comments would be sent out after that date. With the board's permission, we could send some draft comments out by the end of that week, maybe Thursday, the 4th. And certainly if there's anything major that comes up that we could get in touch with Mark and certainly Wyatt, if there's consensus on the building architecture.
Yeah, I'd like to move it forward to next week. Is that okay, Mark, Wyatt, with you?
Yeah, I'd like to, I personally like to get this thing going as quickly as possible. You know, we have things that we need to face. You know, we have a ZBA meeting on the 15th that we still need this board's referral to, for the specific use variance. So if we keep on dragging this thing on further and further and further down the road, I mean, we'll be in August before we get final.
We're not going to drag it out.
So we'll be able to do that recommendation. We have it on our agenda and calendar to make that recommendation at the next, at our next meeting, which is plenty of.
That was by design.
Right, so.
And we've been favorably disposed to that issue.
Yeah, yeah, we don't have a problem with that. So we'll finish that. I'll get that resolution together. So at the next meeting, for sure you'll get that, you'll get that. I shouldn't say for sure because I'm not the board, but it looks like we're disposed to do that recommendation as well as the subdivision will finalize that. And then I think you'll get a good, like the feel-good or whatever about the plans so that once the ZBA acts, we can do the final determination. And if we get the feel-good, then whatever Andy gives you on, as far as, you know, some kind of permitting to get going, we can do that by the next meeting.
Has anyone had a chance to look at the site plan that we submitted for 6803?
Mark has a question for the board?
No, because, you know, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we addressed all the issues that we talked about at the work session, you know, we reduced the pavement in the front of the building.
Pull that up, Stephanie, and we'll look at it.
Just give me a moment.
Yeah, we decided to advance this to this meeting, even though it's public and not a work session, because we have time and we wanted to facilitate this process.
Oh, we thank you.
Yeah, but to answer your question, as I'm pulling these up, Mark, no, I have not gone through and compared this against the last set of comments that had gone out. Yeah, we just took a quick look just to make sure that we had the information available, but we're not in a position to respond to how well everything's been addressed or anything of the site technically.
Just an overall, you know, okay, yeah, you know, you've done what we asked for. No, you haven't, you know, type of thing.
We'll get something to you by the end of next week.
Yeah, okay.
We had the subdivision of combining the four lots into one. There was no issues with that, Jamie?
Correct.
All right. So I think that covers all of it. Stephanie and Emily, you know what to do. And Andy and Nick, will you keep us on track for next week?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Is there going to be a meeting next week or is there?
No, we're going to meet internally.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, we want to process all of this. This was, we wanted to use this to put it into one package. And Nathan and the architects, and then now we got to meet just to talk about that and we'll do that electronically and move forward and get some comments back to you, both detailed and in the whole general context of that front design.
Right, okay.
Can I just make one request that when we get a final submission, it's clean, pull out all of the old material from the submission? Because it was a little confusing going through the drawing set to have the different renditions. Just make it a clean, this is what we're proposing.
Me, sure.
Wyatt or?
Yeah, I just thought I was trying to facilitate you so you had in front of you where we were and where we came from, but sure, that's easier for me.
Okay, thank you. We will get back to you by the end of next week.
Okay, thanks, bud.
Thank you.
Anyway, sign off.
Yes, you better do it or you'll be taped from now until you do time.
Be careful.
Thank you. Midler Business Center, concept, site plan review. Is the applicant here? Anybody?
Bob, you're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can. There you go.
Okay, all right. I'm here. Okay.
The Midler Business Center, you want to give us an overview?
This is a property of about 12 acres, of which on the northern six acres, there's an existing building that we renovated and got site plan approval back 20 years ago. We've never addressed the southern portion. There's five and a half to six acres on the southern portion. But we did construct a retention basin to take on future development in that area. We've never done anything with that property. And over the years, it's been sort of an area where people have snuck in there because it's kind of remote and dump things. We've already removed over 100 tires from the vegetated area in the back there. And we thought it was time to clean it up. Plus, we've got some boats and some vehicles out there that we, you know, want to move out from the front and move it towards the back where it's more secure. So we wanted to put, we wanted to take a two acre parcel in the back, fence it and put a gate on there and basically just keep it for some of our tenants who want some storage areas outside. And, you know, we're just improving that site. So what we're looking for is really just to put a fence, a chain link fence around that two acre parcel. That's it.
All right, no, it needs some work, that's for sure. The storage, it's, help me out here in terms of the zone and how much storage is allowed. Nick or Jamie or Andy?
There's a.
Question? What's your question, Peter?
The question is what, how much storage? What type of storage is allowed in this area? And what are the sight lines, et cetera?
Well, I'll have to look at what the code is on that. So I guess I'm just trying to, I guess what we're trying to figure out is what does he want? And then we'll get.
Well, he wants some storage there. That's the purpose of the chain link fence. And I take it there's some storage now and it's somewhat unsightly. So we need to kind of get our head around what the use is.
He wants to leave it as vacant land, but use it to store boats and cars and other stuff on it.
And is it a separate property?
No, it's all part of one parcel.
Okay, so that, so it's not, it's not a storage, outdoor storage independent of the others?
No.
So we need to look at it as a site issue. So we'll have to look at what's required in the industrial zone.
Okay. There was also one of the comments from Mark Parish that because we're disturbing more than an acre, that we need a SWIP. You know, I mean, we're not paving, we're just going to, we're stripping tap soil and putting in structural fill and gravel and tap. So there's already an existing culvert that was approved when we did site plan approval many years ago. And also that site drops from the back, which would be the eastern side to the western side towards Midler about five feet naturally. But the heaviest rain we get, water is never going to reach that front retention area because it's going to perk prior to that.
Okay, so Bob, I just want to clarify that Mark's letter also pointed out that you are within the Lake Creek District.
Yeah.
Lake Creek runs very close to this property here. And the town's threshold for disturbance is 10,000 square feet. And to be honest, I'd done a site visit to take a look at this property and I noticed that there's quite a bit of work underway already here. And it looks like there's some flattening. There was the clearing of vegetation. So it's definitely fits the definition of disturbed.
Okay.
And you absolutely need to have a SWIP to proceed it. There should have been one already.
I didn't realize that for just putting the fence up there, but I'll have Terry Horst address this.
Okay.
Terry.
Thank you. I'd like to.
Yeah, you're changing it from, you know, a wooded lot to a gravel lot. So that's a significant change.
Okay.
And furthermore, the materials that are provided here, we really need to get an updated baseline survey just to understand all of the changes that have occurred since the site plan was approved, you said, 20 years ago. And again, this doesn't exactly jive with the existing conditions that are visible in this aerial photograph. You know, you've got, the part of this is fenced and paved in some manner.
Yeah.
It would have been really important to have all this vegetation delineated and included on any survey materials as well. So let's just focus on getting the materials established for a proper baseline review.
I've got Christopher, some surveyor who did the survey, updating the survey now. He didn't have it ready at the time of submission for this project. So I just put in the survey that we had. It was from years ago.
Okay, that's good to know. Great.
But even if there was a project approved 20 years ago, wouldn't they have to come back? Isn't there so many years that lasted?
Six months. Yes, six months.
So wouldn't they have to redo the whole thing, even if they were doing renovations or whatever they're doing?
Yes, that's correct, Joe.
You mean the survey, the survey you're talking about?
Well, no, just anything, even anything improvement.
Whatever you didn't do from that.
Well, whatever you see on that site plan on the northern port, on the north part of the excess drive, which is the building side is all accurate. It's 100%, accurate. That's exactly as is built right now.
Yeah, there's no materials that are either dimensioned or shown for this full area here. And again, the vegetation should be shown.
Well, there is no vegetation now.
Yeah, now.
Clearly.
Well, now they're in.
Yeah, but there was nothing really significant. It was mostly scrub. Some very small trees, nothing very big, but mostly scrub and a lot of, I call it landfill, that people dumped in there over the years. So we didn't think it was significant to worry about.
Well, you're here now, so we'll need to look at what we have. And what's the next step then, Jamie?
Well, I think if, I think the most important thing is if we can get that baseline survey, we'll be able to address the comments. I'm going to look at the outdoor storage issue, but we kind of need to see what's going on on the whole site.
And we'll need to SWIP with the.
Yes.
And we'll talk to Mark about his comments about that, you know, what we need with respect to the SWIP. But also perhaps when we get the whole survey, what's there, we'll have a, it's going to inform everything a lot better.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Is that it?
Thank you, Bob.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks. Bye-bye.
Anything else from the board?
No, I don't know.
All right, I do need to speak to Jamie afterwards and Andy and Nick, if I could, and Stephanie. Possibly you could just stay on and make it easier. We won't have to reconnect.
I think we're going to have to.
Close this off, okay.
Post meeting, yep.
All right.
So I'll move to adjourn? I will.
Nathan, thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Kathy. All in favor?
All right.
All right, thank you all.
Thanks all. Thank you, guys. Great job. Thanks. Thanks. Bye-bye.
All right, so we'll call out of this and what's the best way to?
Multiple people are now exiting.
To reconnect.
Well, is there a way we can stop the recording and then just have our discussion?
Yeah, Stephanie, can you do that? I guess not. All right, let's.